I'm going to reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting for May 7th, 2018 at 7:17 PM. Council, please sign in. All council members are present. Do we have any scouts in the room? I see we got one teenager. You a scout? Alright, well come down anyway. Seriously, come on down. He's like, dang it.
Behind the podium there's a young man.
Is there a young man behind the podium?
There is, yeah, we're behind the podium.
Hiding? Cause I can't see. Alright, you come on down too.
Just when I thought I was out.
He's like, I thought I was gonna be anonymous. Alright, so gentlemen, no, come all the way up front. All the way up front. You guys get to do the most important part of the evening tonight, and that is lead all of us in the pledge of allegiance. So, audience if you would, please stand. So this is the most important part, alright? So here's how it's gonna work. We're gonna turn around and face the flag. Everyone behind you is ready to roll. Put your hand over your heart, and everyone's gonna wait to hear you guys start talking, and when you start saying the pledge, everyone else will jump in. Okay? You guys ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, good job guys! What's that?
I like his style.
Yeah, I know. I play ball. I kind of agree. I think we should all get to wear flannel like that. Looks pretty good dude. Alright, so special presentations. Michelle, do we have any special presentations tonight? Do not. Alright, that's fine, no worries. Alright, then we're gonna move up to Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. Mr. Houston. I do think we need to get Chamber of Commerce and DBA like walk-on music, and so when, before we call you up, we can hit it, you know? Little jock jams or something like that?
I like it, I like it.
Alright.
I'll try to make this presentation special, how's that?
Thank you, always is.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Just a few updates. I want to talk about a few fun things tonight. Maybe not so much the business side of things, but some of the fun things going on with the Parker area Chamber of Commerce. Couple, a couple things on the front end on workforce. Continue to convene a number of meetings between some local businesses, some educators in the area. We're doing that even more so on a regional level now. Just came from a meeting a few minutes ago related to that very topic, so gonna continue to be doing some things there, so look for some, some cool things coming forward on that. We just participated in our annual State Chamber Conference for the Colorado Chamber of Commerce executives. It was hosted in Colorado Springs this year, and pleased to share some good news with the folks here this evening that our wine walk event that the Chamber has been doing in recent years was voted among their peers as the best special event among chambers of commerce for the state of Colorado for 2018. So we're excited about that, so.
Congratulations!
My apologies, I did not bring any reds or whites to celebrate that occasion, but anyway, we're excited about that. And our Chamber is playing a leadership role in the state association this year too, so we're excited for that too, for this next, next year. The DCBA, our Douglas County Business Alliance we're part of, we're pretty involved in some of those transportation conversations, and I know many of you are as well, and so we're actually meeting in a couple days, and we're gonna be doing some, some public education outreach in the coming months to look at what that is and try to educate people on what some of those options are. So, be looking for more information on that. We'll be hosting an event here in the Parker area this summer focused on what some of those transportation solutions are going forward. Down to the fun things, 30 days from today, this is May 7th, Parker Days kicks off on June 7th. Technically 31 days from today, but we'll call it 30. The, we'll kick off on Parker Days, of course, with our Trace Atkins concert, great Mother's Day presence. Kick off at Trace Atkins concert, and Friday evening, we're excited, and I know I've shared a couple of these things, but I have a few new things in the mix, but Friday evening, our music lineup will be tribute bands kicking off with Tom Petty, followed by Foreigner and Queens. That's gonna be a great night of music that everyone's gonna enjoy, and I know that there's some big music fans sitting up there on that day as. Saturday, we're excited, we brought back Buckstein that's gonna help us close out the evening, working with KYGO, and they're gonna be doing a lot of promotion for us on KYGO. And earlier in the evening on Saturday, we have a band that no one in this area has heard before, it's the Mark Powell Band, and I don't even have had a chance to meet Mark Powell. He's a newer resident in Parker, but leads an award-winning country band based out of Texas, so he's flying the rest of their band in, and they're gonna perform for us at Parker Days this year, and it's actually a late edition that we were able to pull off. And on Sunday, we will have the youngest band in Parker Days history on our main stage, Running With Scissors. Mike, you heard some of this earlier today at our Business Impact Meeting, but we're excited to have this high school group of kids just do some amazing things. If you, if you go on YouTube and look at Running With Scissors, you'll be very impressed. So we're gonna kick off Sunday afternoon with that, followed by the Natrum and Richie Law. On Friday, this will be our inaugural year for our Special Needs Day on Friday for the carnival rides over in the Pace Center area. We're very excited about that. Unfortunately, that those opportunities filled up very quickly. We're gonna be able to accommodate 300 special needs kids and adults. Carnival will be just open just for them, and it's a registration process that's taking place, but it'll be a free carnival day for that afternoon for special needs folks in the area, so we're very excited to be able to share that day with them. One mom reached out to me, actually this morning via email, and said, my 22-year-old son, this will be an opportunity for him to actually participate in the carnival for the first time in his life at age 22. So, gonna be some cool, some cool moments that day at Parker Days. A couple new additions, our Slack Line Event, there'll be a competition. We'll be bringing people back and forth from the GoPro Games that take place that same weekend. The same competitors in the GoPro Games are gonna be down here on and off on alternating, alternating days for a competition here in Parker, many of which will end up in the 2028 Olympics, a lot of those same individuals. Our BMX Arena Competition will be a new addition, and our Wine, Whiskey and Craft Beer Garden over at the corner of Pike's Peak and Main Street will be a nice addition. And one cool thing that we're very excited about, many people had a chance to meet them today, but we've initiated the Parker Chamber Student Ambassador Program, and we have a phenomenal group of young high school students representing several different high schools in the Parker area that are serving as our ambassadors, helping us rally volunteers for Parker Days. They were actually in our office for a few hours this afternoon following our Business Impact Meeting, and it's just a great opportunity for us to connect with the students in the community, and so they're excited to not only participate in Parker Days, but actually help be a part of that planning process. And last but not least, we were pleased today to host a Mayor's Forum with representatives from Parker, Lone Tree and Centennial giving community updates, so appreciate you, Mayor Wade being a part of that, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Only thing that you left out is that there'll also be a Jumbotron at Parker Days, correct?
Yes, that's true. That will be a new addition as well, thank you. It'll be a pretty massive screen, we'll have the main stage here, and the stage will be the biggest stage we've ever had as well, so it's, it continues to grow in size each year, so.
Cool. Council, questions?
I will need high-res JPGs of each of your faces so we can put those on the Jumbotron.
Put them up on the Jumbotron?
Oh, that's just a bad idea.
Just go online and Google Matthew McConaughey.
Yes, please do that!
Miraculously Wade was elected to a third term! No, alright, cool, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, next update we have is from our DBA Downtown Business Alliance.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for letting the Downtown Business Alliance come and give you an update. First off, you may notice, I am not Shelley Mango.
What?
I am here in her stead tonight. She apologized she couldn't be here. My name is Chris Schnell. I'm the Vice Chair of the Downtown Business Alliance, I'm also the Chairperson of the Marketing Committee, so what that means is, with a lot of hard work and a little luck, one day I could be like Shelley. So I wanted to give you an update on our website, downtownparker.com. It's rolling along, almost done. A couple more days, we're putting the finishing touches on that sucker, and we'll be ready to be your one point of access for what's going on downtown. We'll be rolling that out with some other promotional items like hats, coasters and the like, and we'll be promoting downtownparker.com. This is really important, we have a Government Action Committee, they're gonna be conducting a survey of our members, asking them about general business climate and things like year-over-year percentage change for sales and employment, and we hope that we could be a resource to you and provide you with that information. Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday, 9:00 AM at the library. We're gonna have Parker Days update from the Chamber, so that'll be exciting, and we'll be also putting the finishing touches on our website. And last but not least, I want to introduce the Chairperson of our Creative Committee. You might also know her as the owner of Victoria Marie Jewelers. This is Teresa Hawkins-Garchia to talk to you about the First Friday Art Walk.
Alright.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. Well, Dennis, I don't have nearly as much information as you did, but I do have some really wonderful things to report. The Creative Committee has several endeavors that are artistic in nature that we are promoting this year to drive business to the downtown area and promote the arts. Our first event is the First Friday Art Walks. We had our kickoff this past Friday. It was held at Victorian Peaks in conjunction with the end of the Parker Artists Guild Best of Show. And Maggie at Honeywood Homes held an open house featuring several of her artists. We had live music, as well as the Parker Artists Guild had seven of their members act as docents for their show, as well as two of their members actually doing demonstrations of sculpting and 3D painting. The First Fridays are going to be held the first Friday of June, July, August and September. We have seven main points where we will be featuring 25 different artists and five performance artists. Those anchors will be Victorian Peaks, the Old Schoolhouse, 20 Mile Station and Parker Station, with other spots in between. We also will have a tent for interactive art activities for children. There will be free popcorn, free snow cones, and the, yeah, yeah, that's my favorite part too. But the performance artists are going to include Irish folk singers, bluegrass music, jazz, and we are really hoping that everyone will be able to come out and join us and to experience the best of Parker's artists. We are also promoting two other activities. We are going to be promoting an interactive art activity that will be throughout the entire downtown area. There will be three or four stations, we're not quite sure yet, we're working on that. And we're also going to be offering hand-painted glass ornaments at both the tree lighting ceremony and the carriage parade. And I think I've covered everything. Did I leave anything out?
I think you're good.
Cool. Council, do you guys have any questions?
Anything?
Alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, so the next item on our agenda is for general public comment. This is for public comment on items that are not currently on our agenda. If you're here for an item that is on our agenda, there'll be a public comment time for that item, so this is just for general public comment. Three-minute time limit, you'll see there's a clock above me, I've got one on the back wall over there. When you come up for public comment, you'll state your name and address for the record, please, and then the clock, clock will start rolling. If you get to zero, I'll cut you off, not because I'm rude, but because we want to make sure and get everyone else up who has an opportunity, who'd want an opportunity to talk. So again, this is for items not currently on our agenda. This is the time to come on down if you have public comment. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at 7:31, and then we'll move on to reports, items and comments from Mayor and Council. Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything to add at this point.
Amy?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to just recognize that we did have the Town of Parker Boards and Commissions Appreciation Dinner last week, and that was just an opportunity for us to recognize and thank all of our volunteers in the community who serve on the Cultural and Scientific Commission, the Investment Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, Special Licensing Authority, P3 Advisory Committee, and the Parkers Creative District. And so again, these are a lot of opportunities that are open to all of the members in our community, and we'd love to have you come join us.
Excellent. Josh?
Enough from this week, Mr. Mayor.
Renee?
In addition to the Board, I took this off. In addition to the Boards and Commissions Dinner, the town also had its Big Picture Meeting that Michelle holds for all of the town employees, and that was very, very well attended and a lot of good information. And then we also had the Town Council and the Parker Chamber of Commerce Joint Meeting, and I think most of us were at all of those events.
Debbie?
I don't have anything.
John?
Nothing, Mayor, appreciate it.
Okay. Only other thing I have to add, or two things I have to add, is one was we did have the Police Citizens Academy graduation last week, and that was always great if you haven't had that opportunity to be involved with that. We, the town offers two citizens academies, one for the town in general, and our police department offers one as well. It's a great opportunity for you to get to learn more about your community. And the last but not least, for those of you who were here at our last meeting, you probably made note of my bright rainbow-colored hair at the time, and I think, Tom, there was even someone online who asked the question during the livestream about what the heck's up with the mayor's hair. My hair was bright, rainbow-colored, long, I had a big long beard. As you can tell, two Saturdays ago was my annual Shave the Mayor fundraiser for pediatric cancer research, so my head got shaved, my beard got shaved off, along with 65 other people who shaved their heads and various parts of their face on the same thing. Happy to say we're still counting the numbers, so you can still throw a donation in there if you'd like. If you go to shavethemayor.com, you can find out how, but the good news is, we should end up this year at raising about $40,000 for pediatric cancer, and that combined with the, oh, I didn't even notice, like Paul's sitting right up front, he shaved his, his beard too, so I was trying to look around to see if there was anyone else who was shaved, and yeah, you were there as well. With the $40,000 this year combined, all six years, we will have raised about a quarter million dollars for pediatric cancer research. So it's a good, good cause that we wouldn't have been able to do it with if it wasn't for all of you guys, so thank you all very much. So let's go ahead and move on then to the next item, which is item number seven, our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have one removed for further discussion. So with that, Council, I'd entertain further discussion or a motion on Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7J.
So moved.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is our Public Hearings. The first item we have is 8A, this is 20 Mile Village filing two, Amendment nine, used by special review. And Paul, you're gonna be the head honcho on this one, right?
Mayor, before we get started on this one, I would just like to say that in the 18 years, nearly 18 years that I've lived here in Parker, I've had the privilege of working for four companies, one of whom is the applicant for item A, so I am going to recuse myself.
Alright, thank you very much, Amy.
Just come grab me when y'all are done.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Just make sure the music is down low. Having a dance party.
I want to go with her.
I know, exactly, yeah, can you recuse yourself too? Go party.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. As was just referenced, the first case before you this evening is Case Z17-025 for use by special review for a hotel use as a part of a mixed-use building. Subject property for the first hearing this evening is generally bound by Stage Run Drive. To the north of the site is the AMC Theater. To the northeast is Dental Office. To the east is multi-tenant retail, including a restaurant. To the south is a bank, as well as an undeveloped property. And then to the west is the Culvers Restaurant, and then a two-story mixed-use commercial office building. The site itself is designated with a central commercial designation within the town's master plan. It's currently zoned within the Greater Downtown District 20 Mile Center, and within that zoning, lodging establishments are required to receive use by special review approval. The site itself is roughly 4.4 acres in size, and as you can see from the image, it is currently undeveloped. Speaking a little bit more about the master plan, the image on the left reflects the overall town master land use plan for that central commercial designation, which is intended to be the commercial center, the commercial core of the town. The, the town's master plan is reflective of the entire town, so it's very broad in nature. A sub-plan of the town's master plan is the Main Street Master Plan. That plan gives a little more guidance, a little more specificity to development along Main Street Corridor. Within that sub-area plan, the subject property is called out for a mix of uses with a public plaza or park feature in the center of the property, and that is reflective of the Main Street Master Plan. Probably heard staff give this slide presentation a few times, but the request this evening is for a use by special review. That is one of three categories that a use can fall into. The first type of use is a use by right, which are uses that are generally consistent with the intent of the zone district. For example, a restaurant in a commercially zoned area. The second is the use by special review, which is before Town Council this evening. Those are uses that may present external impacts above those anticipated by the intent of the zone district and require some increased scrutiny. An example would be a hotel within a commercially designated area. The third and final is a prohibited use, those are uses that are inconsistent with the intent of the zone district. A good example would be an industrial manufacturer in the middle of a neighborhood. Again, a use by special review is a discretionary action by Council based on an application's ability to meet the nine approval criteria. Unlike a site plan, it is, it is not, unlike a site plan that is not discretionary if the development meets the requirements. For a use by special review, the details of the site plan are not reviewed at this stage, they are reviewed through the formal site plan process, and it is common for a use by special review to have conditions associated with it. So getting into the request again this evening, should the use by special review be approved this evening, the general site layout is reflected on the right side of the screen in front of you. The left side would be future development to be reviewed through the town's processes at such time as development were to occur. The mixed-use building, including the hotel component, is located in the southeast corner of the site, surrounded by a parking lot for the property, as well as two points of access, one from the north and one from the southeast. And then to the west of the structure itself would be pedestrian plaza, open space, plaza amenity, if you will, that would be constructed concurrent with the building itself. This is a 3D rendering of what the building may look like. It's likely that there would be some tweaks and some modifications as we go through the site plan process, but this is a general representation of the building itself. This is looking north from the entrance off of Main Street onto Stage Run. The building itself is proposed four stories. The first story would be commercial uses, open to the general public. The second through fourth floor would be where the, the rooms would be located. The hotel's proposed to have 51 rooms as part of the development. In addition, on the second through fourth floor would be associated outdoor patio space in a restaurant. And then again, the plaza space located on this image is just to the left of the building. As previously referenced, there are nine approval criteria for a use by special review. Staff won't go through each of these individually, they are detailed in the staff report that was provided ahead of the meeting, but it is important to touch on a couple of these. The first one is approval criteria number one, that the request is harmonious and compatible with the character of the area. This area is commercial in nature, there's a variety of existing commercial uses that surround it, and this use would help support those adjacent commercial uses. The second approval criteria, that the request be consistent with the master plan. As referenced earlier in the presentation, the request is consistent with the commercial core designation, as well as the Main Street Master Plan. And then the, the sixth approval criteria is that there's no undue traffic congestion or hazard. There was a traffic impact study that was submitted and evaluated by the Town's Engineering Division, and the request would not create any undue traffic beyond that what was anticipated when this area was, was contemplated for development. Terms of referral agency response, at this time, all referral agencies have responded with either advisory comments or no comments related to this request. Public comment, during Planning Commission, there were two letters of support submitted for the record. One was from the Parker Chamber of Commerce, another was from an adjacent property owner to the subject property. And on April 26th of this year, Planning Commission recommended unanimously the Town Council approve, subject to two conditions, the requested use by special review for a hotel use within a mixed-use building at the subject property. Those two conditions are summarized on the screen before you, but the detailed language was also included in the staff report. That would conclude staff's presentation, however, we certainly are available for any questions you all may have. The applicant is here as well and does have a short presentation for you as well.
Excellent. Before we bring the applicant up, Council, do you have any questions for Paul?
Not yet.
No? Alright, come on down.
Mr. Mayor.
Whoops, you hit the button.
Hope it's the mic's on. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mitch Trevey, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Trevey, you know the routine, name and address for the record, please.
I do. Mitch Trevey with Parker Main Street Partners, 10500 Transfelt, Suite 100, Parker, Colorado, 80134. I'm also joined by Linda Hill, who's a consultant with the Hotel Mixed Use Building Developer.
Hi, I'm Linda Hill, and I'm with Hill AVM. My address is 34215, Highway 6, Suite 204, Edwards, Colorado. And may I say one thing? Mike, I heard you on KOA, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And it was a great interview, and I wish I could have seen your hair.
Well, if you hang around till the end of the night, I'll show you a picture.
Okay, I probably won't be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. You sure you don't want, it's only gonna be like midnight or something, we can, no, I'm just kidding. It was pretty impressive there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, as always, it's a privilege to be before you. First off, we need to give thanks with all due respect to your planning staff. Paul Workman has been working for almost a year on this in support with Bryce Matthews, as well as Jason Rogers and John Fusa, so our thanks to that, that collective team in helping us get to this point. Our presentation has been abbreviated from the one that we presented at Planning Commission, primarily because of the fact that Paul did such a wonderful job. Most of what it is that we need to cover, he's already covered. So that being said, Paul, we'll, we'll push through this rather quickly, I believe, so. You're familiar with the site, the location, basically, this shows a vicinity map and the surrounding multifamily development. It's definitely an undeveloped vacant infill site. It's got existing infrastructure to support the site, as well as access to thorough fairs. It's also got adequate town services. It's within walking distance of the highest concentration of multifamily apartments in the town, and good proximity and connection to trails. What you'll notice by this graphic here is that it's virtually surrounded by roughly 1,200 apartment units, which creates a good location for a lot of those residents, you know, to, to come and, and, you know, enjoy shops and, and have a central place to gather, which doesn't really exist on this side of Main Street, so we can go. What we did when we looked at accommodating this mixed-use building, because as we all know, this particular use was not met with favorable consideration on the east side of Main Street, so when they came to us, we looked at this, this property is a great place to accommodate them. First place we needed to start, of course, was with the master plan in general, and so as we looked at that, the property sits in the central commercial retail land use designation area, and of course, in the master plan, it says that that area is intended to. And of course, in the master plan, it says that that area is intended to ensure a variety of commercial services, including lodging, and to encourage vertical mixed-use buildings. So, and looking at the goals and strategies of the master plan, which staff has also done, it does create an opportunity for an expanded economic base. It does create a sense of neighborhood community among those who work, live, and play in the immediate area. It's surrounded by the highest concentration of apartment uses in Parker, so the need for a mixed-use retail and restaurant development is already present. It nurtures and supports existing businesses by expanding commercial activity in this area, and it also introduces mixed-use services that encourage unique and local flavor. And the plaza and the first-floor shops encourage pedestrian environment. So from that point, we looked at the Main Street Master Plan. So you can click again, Paul. What was interesting there when we started to analyze the Main Street Master Plan is the particular property, it's outlined there in sky blue off to the left or to the west side, it's got that little green node going right through the middle of it. Well, that's identified as a plaza space. And so as we situated the hotel mixed-use building on the property, we kind of looked at what we would do with the rest of it, and it made perfect sense for us to run a plaza right up the middle of it to connect Main Street basically with the theater. So that was a plan that we had in place, and then to our delight, we found that that's what the town would like to see in the Main Street Master Plan. So it, in creating a vertical mixed-use development, it does deliver a multi-story mixed-use project with unique character. Ground floor retail, just as a side note, if this was just going to be a hotel building with no retail on the ground floor, we would not be in support of it. That was important for us to bring in to kind of front and develop the whole feel on the plaza. So that's important to us, the ground floor retail. It does have a pedestrian focus. Obviously, if it's gonna be serving all those apartment dwellers that are in the immediate vicinity, it's appropriately scaled at four stories. It does create a public gathering space, and there's a plaza connection into the entertainment district, what I just mentioned. Obviously, it's easily accessed, and it's designed for events and festivals on the west side, something that the west side of Main Street does not have. Simple enough? When you're standing on that property, it's indeed just a big vacant 4.4 acre piece of ground. So when you're looking to the northeast, of course, you see the theater, and then off to the west is that two-story building with RE/MAX in it. When you look off to the east, basically, you see all the way across to that multi-tenant retail building and the bank building, and then obviously straight across the south are the Waterford Apartments on Main Street. So that's the view you get when you're standing out there. So we had our architect do a rough sketch of how this would look, and it's since gone to more clean iterations, but this one just kind of gives you a good artistic feel of what it is that we have planned for the whole project. You can see the mixed-use retail and restaurant boutique hotel building on the southeast corner of the project, and then immediately across the plaza to the west is gonna be a mixed-use retail office, potentially residential building, same height planned potentially at four stories. And then on the north end of the plaza, two freestanding restaurant buildings, and this is all conceptual at this point. Right now, we're just looking for the use approval for the mixed-use hotel building, but that's the big picture, basically, as it came off of the architect's pen. Pretty cool. That being said, I'll let Linda speak to the actual facility itself that accommodates the hospitality feature.
Thank you, Mitch. So hospitality, love that word. It happens to be what we market a lot at my agency. The fifty-one-room boutique hotel is just that, a boutique hotel. It's gonna create a beautiful sense of place that will complement the plaza structure. The unique shops and restaurants that will be on the ground floor are going to go ahead and complement both the hotel guests that are coming in, as well as those local residents that will be taking advantage of the pedestrian-friendly area. One thing I did want to communicate is that the hotel itself will be attracting a variety of audiences. We're looking at corporate travelers coming into the area, fairly high-end because of the independent nature of the boutique all-suite hotel. We're looking at trying to accommodate weddings. There will be a beautiful deck up there that a lot of the Parker ladies can go ahead and use for their future weddings. And then we're also looking at friends and family. Again, you've got twelve hundred to fourteen hundred-plus apartments in the area, and should some of those people that are living in those residences not want, let's say, their mother-in-law or somebody like that to stay with them? Maybe I shouldn't say that. But this will provide an opportunity for that. It'll be a very beautiful place for them to stay. Can you go on to the next one, Paul? The other big point to this is that it will be a preferred hotels brand, and some of you may have heard of that brand before. It is a collection of hotels that are exceptional throughout the United States and actually the world. Some of those hotels that you will recognize include the St. Julian in Boulder, the Broadmoor Hotel in Colorado Springs, and then the more recent Art Hotel in downtown Denver, which will be great. And then for some of those others that are outside of the state, it's like the Lodge at Pebble Beach, the Hotel Fonda in Santa Fe, just to give you a taste of that flavor. Then with the ambiance of the hotel itself, and you can see the elevations here, and I'm gonna go pretty quickly because Mitch said I had just three minutes. And I'm, the clock's not moving. Do you want, do you need to hit the button, Mr. Mayor? Vintage pre-World War II ambiance and decor with a very high level of customer service. You can go to the next one, Paul. And then when we start looking at the exterior, we'll have multicolored brick, bronze, zinc, and gray finishes, black-brown balcony railings, and period fixtures and lighting. The hotel itself will have three restaurant facilities. We are still working through those details, but one will definitely be upscale and a fine dining kind of arena. We're looking at the opportunity for a kind of upscale burger bar, and then possibly a small-plates call piano-type bar up at the very top floor. You might ask how we kind of came to this? We did a lot of due diligence for Mitch and his team and Mike May from Mars Hospitality. The first was a neighborhood meeting that we actually had at the bank, and we invited thirty surrounding businesses in the area to go ahead and just answer questions. Mitch and his team put some beautiful boards together to kind of show what the hotel and the mixed-use area would look like. The second meeting was for the residents of the area, Waterford, Briargate, and Trailside Apartment, and that was held at the library. We sought input regarding overall impact. Were there any questions that people had in general? The feedback was extremely positive, and we did not get any opposition whatsoever from those community meetings. And I will go ahead and turn it back over to Mitch.
Well done, in less than three minutes.
I know, because it didn't move.
Yeah. So in summary, obviously, it does meet the nine criteria for use-by-special-review, and as Paul had lined those out, but did not go through them in detail, very quickly we will. It is in harmony and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and the neighborhoods. It is consistent with the town's master plan and the Main Street Master Plan. It will not result in an over-intensive use of the land, nor will it have any adverse effect on the community capital improvement programs. It's not gonna require any level of community facilities and services greater than what is currently available, and it will not result in any undue traffic congestion or traffic hazards. It certainly will not cause any significant air, water, or noise pollution. It will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened, and it will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of present or future town inhabitants. I believe that concludes our presentation. Oh, perhaps not. We see that this is an opportunity to create a real signature, legacy-type project on the west end of Main Street, something that's not there, something that the west end of Main Street really needs. It is supported by economic development. It's supported by neighboring commercial businesses, supported by the neighbors, and it's been supported by staff. We have worked diligently with town staff. It does meet the vision of the Twenty Mile Master Plan. It complies with all the development standards. Engineering, traffic, and public works are in support. The use is consistent with the master plan. It fits the community vision and plans for developing the West Main Street Gateway, and we are indeed looking forward to a successful project. I believe that would conclude our presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mitch. Council, do you guys have any questions?
Mitch, do you guys have a timeline at all?
Timeline for the construction of the mixed-use hospitality building is absolutely as quickly as we can move through the process. We're looking at funding and final approvals internally, May or June, so we would like to see ground broken this summer.
Mitch, as we've come to expect, your job is absolutely thorough, and I just want to compliment you on the approval considerations. I've never read a more thorough document as far as answering every possible question, so thank you to you and your staff for that.
Very good. It's not just me.
Questions?
I was impressed that you knew what sky blue was.
Sky blue.
It was good.
Good. Other questions, guys? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at seven fifty-five PM. If there's anyone here wishing to give testimony on this item, again, the rules from before still stand, three-minute time limit. This is the time. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Houston, one ninety-five ninety East Main Street, Parker, Colorado, eight oh one three eight. Mayor and council, as, I'm gonna read a statement on behalf of our board of directors and our business community. As CEO of the Parker Area Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, I come before you tonight on behalf of our six hundred Parker Area Business Partners, their eighteen thousand employees, and the jobs they represent. I ask for your full support of this amazing Parker Boutique Hotel and Shops. Many families move here because Parker has an amazing hometown feel that reminds them of where they grew up. Parker has an incredible sense of place, and our downtown area, both east and west, play a major role in that. It's the downtown area, community vision, and the Parker people that signal to people that Parker just feels right. This hotel and shops will give current and new residents that same feeling in the future. We believe it'll be transformational change for the Parker area. As the official Visitor Center for Parker, our Chamber of Commerce team strongly believes that the hotel and shops will create this change to positively impact Parker for generations to come. This incredible project will soon become a Parker landmark. Will serve as a connector to bring east and west Main Streets together as one, which we've all been striving for for some time. Our goal at the Chamber and Visitor Center is to create a three-to-four-hour stroll district, stroll district in the downtown area where people can get out of their cars, grab a great meal at a local restaurant, perhaps walk down the street for a great dessert, check out the great shops and boutiques, and maybe even end up at a local pub to enjoy a beverage to take in the sights of beautiful downtown Parker. It can truly be an unbelievable experience for residents and visitors alike. We feel that the hotel project will become a new community gathering place where big things happen in our community. Most of our neighboring communities are not fortunate enough to have a vibrant downtown district like we do here in Parker. The hotel and shops will help create that walkable downtown that will continue to be the heartbeat of our community. Mike May of Mars Hospitality has an incredible track record of success with his team of making Parker a better place to live, work, play, and grow. Mars Hospitality is a successful Parker-based business that is a hidden gem to many in our community. Mars Hospitality has created great hotel and restaurant projects throughout the country. They were the original developer of Parker's existing hotels near the Parker Northern Gateway to our community. They stand before us tonight to bring one of those transformational projects to Parker once again. Mike and his team at Mars Hospitality have a passion for Parker. Mike has the best interest of Parker in mind with this amazing hotel property that will be locally owned. The community needs the hotel and shops. Parker has a strong need for additional hotel rooms. Parker has a strong need for additional meeting room space. Parker has a strong need for more retail shops in the downtown area.
Dennis, that's the timer just went off.
I'd like to thank you for your time.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm gonna hand a written copy off for you guys as well for the record.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next up for public comment? All righty. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at seven fifty-nine PM. Council, entertain further discussion, please, or a motion.
I move to approve based on staff findings with the following two conditions contained in the staff report. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the site plan shall meet all of the development requirements of the town. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the associated replat shall be recorded in the office of the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder.
We have a motion by Debbie and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Do we need to hit Amy's?
I accept.
You can do it from there? Okay. Motion passes with Amy Holland recusing herself unanimously besides that. Thank you very much. All right, you wanna grab? Did you say you texted her?
Oh, you texted.
All right.
Let's hope it does.
Should we, yeah, should we lock the door? Everyone hide under your seat.
Turn off the light so she comes out and there's nobody.
I would. I'd never be able to get back up.
Now she's saying she's gonna wait for you to act as the girl after you go on.
You need a special.
All right. Next item we have up on our agenda is item eight B. This is ordinance number one dot five oh seven dot two on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the twenty eighteen revised budget for the town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. The item in front of you tonight is a consideration of reducing both of our two thousand eighteen budgeted revenue numbers and the corresponding budgeted expense. So just as we bring forward to council, when we bring the original budget, it is balanced. It is our intention to keep it balanced, and that is why we are bringing forward the reduction on both sides. If we look at our revenue as we have progressed from two thousand fifteen, you can see that we've had some very healthy growth in our sales tax numbers over the year. Our two thousand fifteen and sixteen sales tax growth was eight point nine and seven point three percent respectively. We start to put together the budget about this time each year, so about almost halfway through the year. When we started to put together the two thousand eighteen budget last year at this time, the town was experiencing a ten percent growth in sales tax numbers. As a result for the two thousand eighteen budget, we budgeted an increase of eight percent. That's not what you see up there for the two thousand eighteen budget. What happened is our two thousand seventeen actuals came in much lower than what we were experiencing at this time twelve months ago. That number actually had started out two thousand seventeen at about fourteen percent, declined to ten, and on down so that at the end of the year, we ended up our two thousand seventeen sales tax at a growth rate of five point nine percent. If we were to leave our two thousand eighteen sales tax numbers unadjusted, we would say that we were expecting almost a twelve percent growth in our sales tax for two thousand eighteen, and we know based on history that that's not going to happen. The number that we are shooting for with this round of adjustments is to bring us down to a four percent growth. We feel like that is reflective of what has happened in the past, and this adjustment that we're talking about tonight is only reflective of where we ended up our two thousand seventeen numbers. We will be coming forward to council in the near future to discuss further reductions. So, we started down this path then of looking at about two point seven million dollar reduction in our revenue and needing to find that on the expense side. The first thing that we did is we identified six hundred thousand dollars that needed to be transferred from our technology management fund to the general fund. That is money that had built up over the time period, and the majority of that comes from the general fund. The transfer actually went to the general fund and also all other appropriate funds. So we were actually looking for two point one million dollars. That two point one million dollars was found by looking in about six different categories, seven, I guess, six. So you can see those different categories listed. An example from each of those, the additional revenue, we had increased the budgeted amount for the rentals coming out of Cultural. We had about six positions that were open that we felt like we could continue to leave open without any additional expense to the town. These are situations where the work could be absorbed, and we were not going to be requiring any additional overtime or any other expense. Again, like I mentioned, we put together the budget so early in the year. We budget our expenses based on where we are, where we think we're going to be for the previous year. We were able to reduce several of our expenditures down to two thousand seventeen levels, which meant reducing them from where they had been budgeted. Most of those expenses occurred in our supply-type line items. Our internal service allocation accounts were also able to contribute. The primary contribution is coming from our fleet organization. They were able to make use of a state contract that enabled us to save about two hundred thousand dollars. The operations and policy impacting area is the largest number up there. It's just under a million dollars. This category captures many different examples. We have everything from the deferral of shade structures at Discovery Park, a reduction in our repair and maintenance. in our repair and maintenance for concrete restructuring and bridges, the deferral of several of our studies. So those are some examples of what falls in there, and then it always takes another category to get everything to add up. We have identified the $2.1 million that we needed to find, and this will leave our budget balanced for 2018. As we go forward, staff recommends approval, and I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mary Lou? No? All right, thank you very much. Since it is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:06 PM. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:06 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I'd like to make a statement real quick. I just want to point out to the citizens that as we're growing, and we do see growth in specialty retail, I know that shops that I own and other shops that I know are still doing well. I think that you can see this budget reduction directly relatable to online sales, and I think that it's very, very important that you think twice about where you spend your money. I know it's very, very easy to hit send or accept or whatever it is on your phone, but we are directly feeling this, and it doesn't happen over a long period of time. It's happened over a year and a half, and it's got to be slightly painful to the citizens, and we can only see it trending down, so please, 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 spend local.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I think with that, I will provide the motion. I move to approve ordinance number 1.507.2 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by John and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, which is item number C, is the Harvey Property Annexation, Zoning, and Exemption Plat, and there's four resolutions to that. Those resolutions are, first one is resolution number 18-038, Resolution to Establish the Findings of Fact and Conclusions Thereon Concerning the Eligibility of the Town Harvey Open Space Property for Annexation. Number two is ordinance number 2.260 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the Town Harvey Open Space Property. Number three is ordinance number 3.334 on second reading. It says a bill for an ordinance zoning certain property within the Town of Parker, Colorado, known as the Town Harvey Open Space Property, to OS, Open Space District pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And finally, number four was this resolution number 18-039, which is a resolution to exempt certain real property commonly known as the Town Harvey Open Space Property from the definitions of subdivision and subdivided land as contained in the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance. All right, Mary, are you going to lead us, or, all right? I got to say, y'all are looking pretty colorful, you know, the
Thank you.
Across the board, yeah. I know.
I dressed them tonight.
There you go. It was your turn, you drew the short straw to have to, okay, all right.
I've got them under control.
There you go.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Again, this is the public hearing for the Harvey Property Proposed Annexation, Zoning, and Subdivision Exemption Plat. The applicant for this project is the Town of Parker, represented by Dennis Trapp, Project Administrator with Parks and Rec, with us this evening. Prior actions on the Harvey Property project include April 2 of this year, Town Council approved the resolution setting the May 7, 2018, public hearing date to consider the annexation of the property. April 16, Town Council approved the annexation and zoning ordinances, both on first reading. And on April 26, Planning Commission unanimously recommended that Town Council approve the Harvey Property zoning request to OS Open Space. Oh, good heavens.
Did we have a technology break?
We have a technology moment.
Just smack it.
I'm not sure.
You want to borrow my apple?
Ooh. We don't have that kind of budget. Ooh.
I don't either.
Close your eyes and imagine a pretty slide.
Dennis.
Hey, hey, ho!
I was waiting for Dennis to act it out and interpret a dance.
Ask the questions.
All right.
Thank you, and my apologies, I don't know what happened there. Okay, all righty.
Now it's going to lock up again?
Let's try that. There we go. Okay, the Harvey Property is a town-owned 71.45-acre parcel located north of the intersection of Main Street and Canterbury Parkway on the east side of Parker. This scenic property was acquired by the town from Douglas County in December of 2016 and is currently undeveloped and zoned open space conservation in the county. The property does have a conservation easement on it, which is held by the Douglas Land Conservancy, and that will remain with the land. Property is currently located in unincorporated Douglas County, and also, the applicant has completed the inclusion process into the Parker Water and Sanitation District. The Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies the Harvey Property as being located within the low-density residential character area, which recommends an overall gross density of 2.2 dwelling units per acre. However, supportive and ancillary uses such as parks and open space are appropriate uses in all residential character areas, such as this proposal tonight. The Harvey Property is also located within the town's urban growth boundary. The town seeks to annex the 71.45-acre parcel currently located in unincorporated Douglas County. The property currently zoned open space conservation, as mentioned before, in Douglas County. As required by the town's charter, all annexing properties must be rezoned. Therefore, the town intends to zone the property open space and provide future open space access with limited passive recreational amenities in the form of a small parking area, soft surface trails, and informal trailside seating. This type of open space park facility is supportive to the neighboring residential land uses and an important amenity for our residents. Again, as previously mentioned, the property has an existing conservation easement held by the Douglas Land Conservancy, and that will run with the land in perpetuity. That easement limits development to the uses I just talked about and a couple of other items, but limits development to the outdoor passive recreational uses only. The property will be platted as one legal lot of record via the subdivision exemption In conclusion, the staff has reviewed the Harvey Property Proposed Annexation, Zoning, and Subdivision Exemption Plat, and has determined that the project is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The annexation meets statutory requirements, meets the vision and goals of the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan. Furthermore, all public notice requirements have been met. The proposal satisfies the nine approval for criteria for zoning, and the proposal supports Parker's balanced growth of development and open lands. With that, Planning Commission and staff recommend Town Council approve the Harvey Property zoning. Staff recommends Town Council approve the Harvey Property Annexation and Subdivision Exemption Plat. That concludes staff's report. We are both available for questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Mary.
You bet.
Counsel, do you guys have any questions?
Can you, maybe Brian, can we speak to Mr. Harvey's actual request and how they were deeded into the design of this open space?
Thank you. The actual conservation easement and what's allowed within that conservation easement, he was party, if you will, when that was crafted and working with Douglas Land Conservancy. As Mary described it, he put the property also in a life estate, knowing that when he would pass, that the property then would go directly to Douglas County along with the conservation easement. And the conservation easement basically spelled out his wishes for the property, as Mary described. Council approved a concept plan, I think late last year, which reflected those uses, allowed uses within the conservation easement. So he was pretty proactive. When he, I think the conservation easement was put in place in 1996, he passed away, I think, in 2001, and having the life estate, the property passed then directly to the county, county had it for seven or eight years, and then came to us to ask if we were interested.
Awesome, thank you very much.
John?
And Dennis, to further that, the Land Conservancy acted as the trustee to make sure that his wishes and our concept was consistent, is that correct?
Correct. Kind of backing up just a bit, the Douglas Land Conservancy, when they hold a conservation easement, they manage, oversee it, monitor it, to make sure anything that happens on the property is consistent with that conservation easement. When we developed the concept plan for the Harvey Property, one of the things we did is we took it to the Douglas Land Conservancy Board, and they unanimously approved that concept plan. And that was, I think, done actually just prior to Town Council taking an action on that concept plan.
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that there was somebody other than ourselves looking at what we thought Mr. Harvey would want, and then conceptualizing there was actually a third party
Absolutely.
Who had his interests at heart, so
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In fact, some of the folks on Douglas Land Conservancy knew Mr. Harvey personally and kind of understood what his wishes for the property were long-term.
For a lot of the people that may not know about the Land Conservancy, maybe a simpler term that they could be more familiar with would be like a deed restriction, or things that we simply cannot do because of the agreement with the Conservancy. So more people may be familiar with a deed restriction.
It's similar. A conservation easement spells out what you can do and what you can't do.
This side, questions?
A good deed restriction does, too.
No? All right, and so just to clarify for those watching at home and those who still have the question I get asked all the time on this, can't, once this, if this happens to be approved, I just want to underscore that town cannot change this to build homes or apartments or anything else. It is open space forever.
Absolutely not. It's going to be open space in perpetuity. That was the way it was set up.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:18 PM if there's anyone here to address counsel on this item.
Mr. O'Malley, a little history?
Sorry dude, you get your three minutes too, so
Start the clock.
Start the clock. Name and address for the record, please.
Ryan O'Malley, 10561 Arrowhead Lane, Parker, Colorado 80138.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. If you have been out to this property, it's a great amenity. I was thinking about today, I was biking down Sulfur Gulch Trail, and just imagining what it's going to be like to have this nice, large, open space populated with a lot of mule deer, a lot of wildlife. There's going to be some, a recognition of Ray J. Harvey and his ownership there. So I urge the council that, please approve this, this is an awesome opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, anyone else wishing to testify? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:19 PM, and there are four different items, so we will entertain discussion and four separate motions, please.
Move to approve resolution number 18-038.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve ordinance number 2.260 on second reading.
Motion by Amy and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve ordinance number 3.334 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh Rivera, second by Josh Martin. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve resolution number 18-039 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Renee, second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is ordinances, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ordinances before you tonight. Oh, actually, so a couple of them are going to be continued, so we actually have five ordinances, but we got to go through the process anyway. So, first one is ordinance number 9.273 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Parker and Parker Water and Sanitation District regarding public improvement securities, and this item is being continued to May 24, a date certain of May 21, 2018. Correct? All right, and then the next item, which is item B, this is ordinance number 9.274 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Parker and Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District regarding public improvement security is going to be continued to a date certain of May 21, 2018. Which brings us to
We need a vote.
We need a motion.
Oh, I thought, okay, all right.
I was just hoping we could make Chris stand there awkwardly for quite some time.
All right, do it, throw me a motion, somebody.
I move to continue, I move to continue second reading to a date certain of May 21, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. And we can apply that to both of them, right?
Both readings.
Or do we do a separate one for both?
It's a different number.
We need a second motion.
All right, so that's a motion approved unanimously for ordinance number 9.273 continuance, and the second one, 9.274, second reading continuance to May 21, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, Hudson. Get out of here, sucker.
Good job, Chris.
All right, yeah, good job, dude. Next item is ordinance number 1.511 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District for Lot 2A, 20 Mile Industrial Park, subdivision filing number two, First Amendment. Alex?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Before you tonight is a request for the dedication of a waterline easement on a town-owned property. This is associated with the Parker Tennis Site Plan currently ongoing. This town-owned property is located at the southeast corner of 20 Mile Road and Plaza Drive, just west of the Parker Field House. Back on March 19, the council approved a site plan and a development agreement allowing the construction of the Parker Tennis Club on this property. The approved site plan includes the extension of a water main and the installation of a new fire hydrant to serve the property, for which the water and sewer provider, Parker Water and Sanitation District, requires an easement over to allow the district to maintain this infrastructure. Because the town will be retaining ownership of this property, the easement must be dedicated to council action. This proposed easement is the district's standard 30-foot-wide waterline easement covering approximately 200 feet from Championship Drive west into the property. As a reminder, all costs of this construction, including all utility costs, are the responsibility of the Parker Tennis developer. Staff does recommend approval of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this. There is also a member of the Parker Tennis team, I believe Barry is here to answer any questions you might have for him.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions? No? Barry, do you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing else to add?
All right, cool. Well, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:23 PM. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:24, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.511 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie, second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Councilman Rivera pointed out that we have a shade of blue, and everyone ensures this is called engineering blue.
Apparently Tom forgot, so he's over there.
That's why he's sitting on that side over there. All right, next item up is item D. This is ordinance number 1.512 on second reading. Bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District for Track D, Rieda West, filing number one. Alex, it's your show again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you again is another request for a waterline easement dedication to Parker Water and Sanitation District over a town-owned property. This time, the subject property is Track D of Rieda West, filing number one, which is shown here on this slide in the yellow, and encompasses Kenny Creek through this property. It's located at the southwest corner of Stroll Road and Parker Road. It's located south of the Rieda West Development, and then north of the 40-acre town-owned property located south of Kenny Creek, which is shown in the blue on this property, on this slide. The property, on your consideration, Track D was recently dedicated to the town's open space by the Rieda West developer to satisfy a condition of the annexation agreement for that property. A waterline easement is requested to be dedicated to Parker Water and San across this property to accommodate the construction of a water main running from Stroll Road down to the Seattle Development, which is located in unincorporated Douglas County, south of the proposed Trails at Crowfoot Development. The Seattle developer is required to build this waterline to provide water service to that property. The waterline will also serve a regional purpose, as it will eventually connect to Pineri Water System to help them utilize Wise Water from that project. The proposed alignment for this The proposed alignment for this waterline, which is shown on this slide in the blue, crosses several properties adjacent to Cherry Creek before crossing the creek south of the town boundary and heading over west to Seattle. The portions through the town have been coordinated with town staff to minimize the impacts of the town properties. It has also been coordinated to avoid conflicts with the Cherry Creek Trail and the future Jay Morgan Boulevard roadway extension along the north end of this alignment. In May of last year, town council approved the dedication of a similar easement for this waterline across a 40-acre town parcel, which is shown on this slide in red. At that time, Track D was still owned by the Rietta West developer. And the Seattle developer was engaged in negotiations with that owner to obtain an easement across the property. However, before that easement agreement was finalized, other development within the Rietta West Development triggered a requirement that Track D be dedicated to the town's open space. So the Seattle developer is now requesting that the property owner, the town, dedicate this easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District. This easement is again proposed to be 30 feet in width and is located outside of the future Jay Morgan Rightaway to avoid conflicts with that future bridge. The waterline will also be bored under Kenny Creek through this parcel, which will help minimize the construction disturbance on this property. As with the previously dedicated easement, no direct payment is being proposed as a part of this easement dedication. In exchange for the easement, the developers agreed to upsize the waterline from a 12-inch line to a 16-inch line that will help serve any future needs the town has on the 40-acre parcel to the south. Additionally, no utilities are currently extended to the town parcel, the 40-acre town parcel to the south. So granting this easement and allowing the waterline to be constructed will save the town that future cost of extending that infrastructure to that property. The developer will be required to obtain the necessary grading and right-of-way permits for this work, along with all applicable development approvals from the town, Douglas County and Parker Water and Sanitation District. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance. I'm available to answer any questions on this waterline or easement. Also, the engineer for this project, Kevin Rohrbach with Outwell, is also present tonight representing the developer. If you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, questions?
Just assuming that nifty line across there is the most efficient way to get it from one place to the other or the path of least resistance?
Yeah, and Kevin can maybe give you some more information on why that alignment was chosen. But we certainly, we tried to parallel Cherry Creek as best we could, crossing it at the best location.
They put it up on the wall and threw darts at it and said that's the path that we're going to. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
I heard engineers just sort of do things willy-nilly.
So, my name is Kevin Rohrbach. Address is 143 Union Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado, Suite 700. Yeah, the alignment, we have worked very closely with the town, the adjacent property owners, taking into consideration future development of Jay Morgan Boulevard. We feel like this alignment's very efficient and works well for all parties involved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, other questions? None? All right, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:28 PM. Dr. Milan, do you want to throw down?
You like water.
You like water. South Metro Fire likes water, likes the bigger, bigger pipeline down there. All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:29 and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.512 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Josh. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item E, ordinance number 4.53.7 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend subsection 10.09.010A of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the roadway design and construction criteria manual. Alex?
My last item tonight, thank you. This item is regards to some revision, proposed revisions to the town's roadway design and construction criteria manual that the engineering and public works department has prepared for your consideration. Just a little bit of background on the manual. The roadway design and construction criteria manual was originally adopted back in 1994. It's been adopted four times since then. The manual sets forth minimum standards and criteria for the design and construction of all public roadways throughout the town. The latest revision back in 2015 implemented a number of recommendations identified in the town's transportation master plan. A summary of the changes proposed with this revision is provided in your packet tonight. Many of the changes are administrative or cleanup in nature. We've also made some minor revisions to our roadway design and construction inspection criteria and also to the associated standard details. These are proposed generally either to clarify criteria for which we often get a lot of questions or just to adjust our standards in response to changes in federal guidelines or to be more in line with industry, industry standards. I can certainly answer any, answer any specific questions you might have about those following this presentation. However, the most significant change proposed in this revision is a third bullet point on this slide, which is a major revision to our pavement design criteria chapter, which I'd like to explain a little bit further tonight. So just on a basic level, the town's pavement design criteria determines what kind of pavement section is constructed with any given roadway. It sets forth design procedures for determining the pavement type and depth of basically the asphalt or the concrete section you see on the roadway surface. It also talks about what kind of subgrate is required under that pavement and then what, if any, mitigation is needed for the soils underneath everything to ensure the long-term stability of the roadway. Pavement design typically considers things like soil conditions, traffic loading and the, you know, the required design life of the pavement. We are making minor changes to some of the design methods in this chapter, but the most significant revision involves the selection of the pavements, basically the pavement section type. Currently, town criteria allows for the selection of either a composite or a full-depth pavement section. I've included examples of both of those on this slide. A full-depth section is essentially a pavement slab directly on the soil underneath, on the compacted soil. A composite section adds in a aggregate base layer between the pavement and the soil, you know, provides additional support, additional protection from the soil movement underneath. So this proposed criteria revision would require now that all roadways be constructed with a composite section. This change is being proposed really with the goal of reducing our long-term maintenance expenses associated with new roadways. Composite sections have been shown to perform better than full-depth sections in the long-term. Again, that additional aggregate layer provides additional stability and buffering from movement in the soil, so it keeps the pavement section more stable in the long-term. This decreases settling and movement of the pavement section, leading to less cracking and degradation of the pavement. Staff has observed longer lifespans and decreased maintenance needs in existing composite sections here within the town when compared to their full-depth comparisons. One thing to note is that roadways constructed as a part of town projects generally already utilize composite sections. So this would largely apply to roadways constructed by developers. Because full-depth sections cost approximately 10% less than composite sections, most roadways are built by developers, end up being full-depth. So several municipalities in the metro area have adopted similar criteria or leaning that way. So we can kind of see the industry starting to move in that direction. So as a staff, we feel like this is a, a good change and we're ready to move in that direction. These proposed changes were sent out for review to all referral agencies that have an interest in town criteria through our eTrackIt system. The changes were also discussed with the town's development liaison committee, which is a group of local developers who provide the town with feedback on development-related issues. That group was generally understanding of the reasoning behind this change. They didn't seem overly concerned about the cost as long as they knew upfront and could budget for it and accommodated within their project, was the feedback we received from them. Overall, with our referrals, we only received a handful of comments on these changes. None were in opposition to any of the proposed changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on these changes or I can explain further the, you know, ins and outs of pavement design.
Council, questions? Pavement design?
My, my only question is, so assuming this gets adopted, obviously there are projects that are already in progress. When would this sort of go into effect for projects going forward?
Sure. So we would adopt this revised manual immediately. Some of the projects we've had in the hopper, we've kind of been warning them this is coming. So we've been kind of asking them, you know, we, we're going to ask you to, to do this composite section. Please plan for it. Some of them will, some of them won't. But we're going to attempt to make every project that hasn't yet given us a pavement design follow this new, new criteria.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. In general, do we, with our roadways, do we experience a lot of bent night clay scenarios?
Only on the curvy ones, Chris.
Only on the curvy roads.
On the curvy ones?
We do have, we do have expansive clays here in Parker, but the bent night that you're talking about is not that common in the Parker area.
Here, okay.
But we do have expansive clays and we've been doing these composite sections on our capital projects for over 10 years. And actually are getting better performance out of them. And so this added investment is going to pay off big dividends in the town, long-term. And we're not the only ones doing this. City of Aurora and Colorado Springs have already adopted and there's multiple other agencies that are doing the same thing. So it's the, the way the industry's going, you just get a much better performance given the soil conditions we have here in the front range with the composite sections.
Thank you.
Other questions? Done? All right, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:35 PM. Most, most of the public we have left is, looks, looks like high school kids.
Fire trucks like composite roads.
Do fire trucks like composite roads? You like, all right, good, good. All right, we'll close public comment at 8:35 and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 4.53.7 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is ordinance number 9.275 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the snow removal intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker, Colorado and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas. Danny, you've got the blue shirt, you've got the blue tie, you're set to go. You are full-on engineer mode. Except you need IT help to get your computer going.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We call this picnic, problem in chair, not in computer. How many engineers does it take?
Did they have PowerPoint in Florida? Okay, there we go.
Yes, we did. As was mentioned, this is the request for approval of the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Douglas County and the Town of Parker. I can't get a MacBook. It's not responding to me. Hang on. There we go. All right. Way back in 2012, town staff was approached by Douglas County to formalize what was a handshake agreement. Due to the town's current network roads, annexation limits, we have streets that Douglas County is plowing. There are streets that we plow that belong to Douglas County within the town limits. The initial IGA was adopted in June of 2013 and expired May 1st of this year. This, the proposed IGA can be amended as needed to reflect changes due to new agreements and/or annexations. In fact, the last IGA was amended twice over the five-year period. The agreement intentionally does not obligate either agency to a methodology, frequency, or a snowfall amount on the roadway. It is just required that each agency follow its own snow removal policy. The IGA does not stipulate post-storm cleaning such as street sweeping. The IGA does increase the efficiency for both government agencies, eliminating the need for us to deadhead, to make unnecessary turns or to double back on roadways that we've already plowed. This is an overall map of the town that shows in red the Douglas County roads that the town will be plowing and in blue, the town-owned roads that Douglas County will be plowing for us. This is Chambers Parkway, south of 470, running south to Aventura. Then again, we have Chambers from Main Street south to the, the town limit. Double Angel from town limit near the stadium, south to Hess Road. And in blue, these are town-owned to be plowed by the county. This is Bluegrass Circle. Most of Bluegrass Circle is within the county, so it makes sense for them to go ahead and pick up that little portion. Recreation Drive, this is a small portion that actually goes into the Douglas County facility. Ponderosa Drive, again, Ponderosa, most of it is within Douglas County, so it makes sense for them to plow that small portion going west to Parker Road. And Main Street, our plows turn on Canterbury. Douglas County continues plowing to the east, so they picked up that portion of Main Street for us. And a very small portion of Buffalo Berry Drive that the county picks up.
22-foot section.
It might be that, yeah. I think they have to go turn around and it, it gives them a convenient place to turn around. And then Hilltop Road, again, Canterbury, because we turn on Canterbury and they continue plowing to the east. Stroh Road, east of Parker Road, the county, it sounds like a broken record, but the most of Stroh Road, that portion is within the county. So it makes sense for them to pick up that little bit. And then, this road is interesting. It's one of the very few gravel roads within the town and the county takes care of it.
Steep grade on it, too.
Yeah. So it's a very equitable agreement. The town is currently, will, will with this agreement plow 5.39 lane miles of Douglas County roadways and Douglas County will plow 5.26 lane miles of town roadways. So are there any questions?
Council, questions?
My only question is, I thought I remembered when the county finished Double Angel out to Hess. I thought for some reason that was dedicated over to the town at that point, but clearly not. And I, I look at Chris as though you just didn't do the whole presentation, so my apologies.
It was dedicated to the town, but we've never annexed it because there's still some issues out there that they need to resolve. But we just recently updated our urban growth boundary to allow that to happen. But as soon as they get those issues resolved, we will annex it. But it's, it's still a road in unincorporated Douglas County, just like Chambers Road south of Main Street, we own it.
Right.
But it's still in unincorporated Douglas County.
Okay. Real quick, how does the, I just noticed there's one residential road. How does that fall with the new six-inch threshold if the county's maintaining a town-owned residential road?
They don't follow.
It would be maintained to the county's snow removal policy.
Okay. And they don't follow the six inches? Are there neighboring roads that we would go in and plow at six inches? Can you go back to that, can you go back to that slide?
Yeah, so you're, you're talking about, uh...
Something berry or pine.
Oh, Buffalo Berry?
Buffalo Berry.
No, 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 it wasn't. It was.
It was in Cottonwood. It was Bluegrass Circle.
Yeah, it's in Cottonwood. The Bluegrass Circle, that's a, a local street and the county actually plows basically every street, every storm. So they actually have a higher level of plowing. But that was originally, we considered that a collector road because the way it loops through there. So we were, it was in our collector network is where it was at before. So it was a street that we plowed every time.
Even though there's driveways on it, it's still got plowed as a collector.
It is, because just the nature of it, it was a, it was a loop, basically. Even though it has driveways on it, it acts like a collector. We have several other streets that were like that in the town as well.
Other questions, council? No? Open it up for public comment at 8:42 PM. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at 8:42 and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.275 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Debbie. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And the last item on our council agenda is item G, ordinance number 9.269.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the amendment to agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Lemon Gulch downstream of Crowfoot Valley Road, Town of Parker. Agreement number 17-06.08A, project number 106741, by and between Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the Town of Parker. Jacob?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, you have before you an amendment to an original agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for drainage, uh, designed drainage improvements on Lemon Gulch. The original agreement included $260,423 for design of the Lemon Gulch improvements in and around the Meadowlark property. $210,423 was by the town, which was funded by Meritage Homes, and $50,000 was funded by Urban Drainage. This amendment includes an additional $100,000 from Urban Drainage and Flood Control District with no additional funding from the town at this time. The additional $100,000 from Urban Drainage will be partially used to fund a sediment supply study on the upper reaches of Lemon Gulch to help inform the design through the subject property on Meadowlark. The remainder of the funds will be used in the upcoming construction project. Just to reorient yourself with the property. Stroh Road is at the top of the picture there. Crowfoot Valley is on the left-hand side. The first polygon on the lower left is the portion of Lemon Gulch that's on the Meadowlark property. And on the upper right, that's the remainder of Lemon Gulch down to the confluence with Cherry Creek. So the design is nearing completion and it is on track with the Meadowlark Development Project as well. Design will include a contractor through the Urban Drainage Project Partners approach. And construction costs will be determined through the development and be funded by Meritage Homes. This agreement with Urban Drainage will be amended to include the contribution from Meritage Homes a little bit later this year. And both the town and Urban Drainage have this capital project identified on our budget with the revenue being offset by the developer. So this project will provide an engineering design for stability to the Lemon Gulch Channel. It is eligible for urban drainage maintenance eligibility in the future and it'll provide a basis for... Drainage Maintenance Eligibility in the future, and it'll provide a basis for Lemon Gulch needs upstream and downstream of the Metalark property. So that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 9.269.1, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jacob? None? All right. Thank you very much. We'll open up public comment at 8:46 PM.
A little bit of sediment.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:46, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.269.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 8:46 PM. For those of you who are still hanging around, you get a two-for-one tonight. We've got our PAR meeting about to start. This one won't take long.